Please let's take our seats. Welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have a moment of silent prayer and as we do, I ask that you may keep the victims and those impacted by the COVID coronavirus as well as the families of George Floyd and the Aubrey family in your prayers. If you would stand with me to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to do roll call again even though I see that the commissioners are all on?
Yes, for the record, we will take roll call. Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner. We couldn't hear you, Commissioner.
President.
Commissioner Sana Gregory.
Present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Present.
Ma'am clerk, we are all present in the counter for.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Commissioners June 2nd, 2020 Board Meeting. Our first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any members have any amendments?
All right, now here and none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Warner second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next we have a presentation, Marda jurisdictional briefing.
Good evening, Chairman Turner and members of the Clayton County Commission. Good to be here as always. Good to see some of you in person and some of you electronically, so thanks for having me. We're going to move through here quickly. Going to give you an update on the COVID-19 and how that's affected Marda, our capital program, some transit-supported land use that's kicked off here in the county as well as our 2021 budget. I do want to welcome some of the board members who are here. I know Roberta Abdul Salam is here in person. I know Jerry Griffin is watching from the netherworld, making sure that he's continuing and best wishes from Chairman Hardage who did not come today. She wanted to come, but it is her birthday and I encouraged her to stay home with her family. So she is not here, but she'll be here, I'm certain, next time. Want to continue to thank you for your support of the 15th Amendment and really want to convey here that we're continuing to keep our promises that we laid out in the 15th Amendment. So no doubt, in your world and our world, the COVID-19 has affected us tremendously. We've put together a series of videos, I'm not going to show any of them here, but I would encourage folks both in the audience and the commission, the Marda heroes, we have a whole lot of dedicated workforce who are just working hard, whether it's a cleaner like we have here or a station agent or a bus driver or a police officer is really dedicating themselves to our customers and that's an important thing to point out. Nationally, transit is really significantly impacted. This is a chart that shows that the largest transit agencies across the country, some are carrying maybe 5%, 95% down in what they're carrying in terms of customers and we do expect it's going to be a long time before things get to whatever the new normal looks like. Here at Marda, we've seen a pretty dramatic decline in ridership on a rail system, but our bus system is a little bit of an abnormality. Good news in terms of that people are still riding the bus. We've seen about a 30, 35% decrease in bus ridership and really this is what's driven some significant changes in delivering service and I'll talk about that in a minute. Starting in when this virus came out, if you can believe it, as I'm sure we all stand here a bit in disbelief that it was only in the beginning of March that we heard of some cases in Fulton County and here we are today with, you know, 100,000 deaths here in this country. We began cleaning immediately and teleworking and did all the things. We reverted to making sure that our employees were safe with rear bus boarding, made some service adjustments that were in line with the decrease in service the end of March, put together a public dashboard and I'll share a little bit about that to make sure we had transparency about our ridership that you saw that's actually from a dashboard, but also how our employees are affected by the virus. And we have about 45 employees who have contracted the virus and unfortunately we've had one gentleman pass away. But in April, on the 20th, we had to make some pretty significant service changes and put forward a essential bus service. And really, the challenge that we had is where our bus ridership was not as down as it was on our rail side. We believed and we still believe today that social distancing is going to be critical on our buses. We're observing only about a 35%, 35, 40% of our customers are wearing masks. We've required all of our employees to wear masks and so we've limited seating and this is a chart of what the bus looks like. So a bus that used to carry 30, 40 people is now carrying 12, 15 people. And so we've had to double down on bus service on our most busiest and most essential routes and have had to move the resources, the operators and the buses onto the routes that we've deemed to be essential. And that's where we are and we continue to evaluate that service on a daily and weekly basis to see where we can expand our service. But I think until social distancing becomes less of a requirement, we're sort of forced to make sure that we have a safe environment for our customers and our employees. This is a chart that shows, you know, our employees, I mentioned before, the 45 employees and the one tragic fatality. So we are affected and our ability to provide service is also affected by the, by our employees not only being coming, getting the virus, but having to self-quarantine. The, you know, so we have made a clear decision that because of the emergency that the board has given me the direction as general manager to make changes to the service. We've done that. We've suspended service in a temporary way like we do with inclement weather. We've briefed the board, made sure that the board is well aware of it and have also been in contact with elected officials like here in Clayton County about how we're advancing this program. This is a, this is the essential routes, the screen on the picture on the left are the routes that we're providing. You can see the routes that go into Clayton County. And what we're clearly doing, the depiction in the pink is the routes that we're getting feedback from, the darker and wider the color indicates where we're getting concerns risen about the fact that those routes aren't running. So we're trying to be reactive to our customer needs as much as we can while maintaining a safe and sustainable bus service. We've, you know, we're putting together a path forward on what we can do. Social distancing is key to it, but we need to make sure that we can enforce masks on the buses. We may be looking to get authority to require that. We don't have that now, so we're stepping up our public campaign to encourage our riders to wear masks and we think that, like the airlines are doing, that if we can raise the number of people wearing masks that we can get back to closer to the bus service that we've been providing historically. Want to give you a little update on our 2021 proposed budget. This is actually the 2020 budget and I think it's an important indicator of our future. Unfortunately, you can see this is the quarters. Blue line is the revenue, red is our expenses. You can see the first three quarters, we were, we were creating a surplus and clearly COVID-19 has had a substantial effect. We've seen a drop in sales tax and fair revenue that is creating a deficit. So we will be going into this year with a deficit, although I'll talk about in a minute the CARES Act that provides some funding for transit agencies including Marda. So we have, the 2021 budget is going to be presented to the Board of Directors this month. Begins July 1 and we have, because of the CARES Acts that I'll talk, CARES Act that I'll talk about in a minute, we do have a balanced budget going into 2021. We're maintaining funding for our service levels that we've historically provided. We have, our capital program is fully funded going into this and we look forward for the ninth straight year of a balanced budget, continuing to defer fare increases, sustaining service levels so that when social distancing is not an issue anymore, that we can restore, you know, largely the service that we've been providing. And key to this is that the CARES Act was passed that gives $25 billion to transit agencies, distributed through a formula, Martyr's receiving 298 million and that will allow us to balance the budget in 20 and 21 and allow us to prepare for balancing the budget in future years. So this is a snapshot of sort of where we stand over the next five years, the operating side. You can see the CARES Act funding, $83 million this year, $150 million next year and then we look to be using some of that and, you know, we will have a deficit in future years, but we do believe that there will be some more money coming through the federal government. We also hope that the economy will pick up quicker and we will be working hard to make sure that we're, we're creating opportunities within our existing budget to get balanced in future years. But we see this as a way of sustaining what we have today and preparing us to take actions for the future, but critical to that is maintaining the level of service that we have throughout our system. On the capital side, as I said, we have continued to fully fund our capital program. So those important issues here in Clayton County and in other jurisdictions that we committed to through the 15th Amendment, we continue to be on track with those. These are a few of those projects. Going to talk about the Justice Center in a minute and some of the other projects that we're advancing. These are critical to our future and the work is well underway. We have a target date and it looks completely promising that the middle of June we will have completed construction on the Justice Center and we hope to be talking to you soon about setting up a date to do a groundbreaking and turn that over and we will, once we open the facility, we will do some events and we've been working with some of you to make sure that we can do an appropriate artwork to augment the transit facility. The O&M, the O&M facility continues to advance. We're working on site design and getting close to real estate acquisition. The project is, as I've mentioned before, substantially bigger, 10 times larger than what was committed to in the 14th Amendment. We will largely be using the existing one cent sales tax to fund this because it will become a, allow us to retire an older facility and move the operation down here into Clayton County. Next steps will be continued coordination with our local jurisdictions, finalize access agreements to gain right of way, access to allow topology and utilities to be surveyed, get a real estate appraisal and continue to fine tune the conceptual design. So the service operation date of 2026 is what's in the 15th Amendment and we feel strong that we're well on track to deliver that. We continue with the shelter program. I'm not going to get into a lot of details into this, but you know, we continue to work on that. We do have to find some replacement sites because of routes that we've suspended during the COVID-19. We clearly don't want to be installing a brand new shelter into a stop that's temporarily been suspended. The BRT system continues, we continue to study that high-capacity transit service and look to work out how we can have dedicated lanes and portions of it and determine what sort of legislation we might need to dedicate that and facilitate enforcement. Our, one exciting thing that we're doing is kicking off some land use planning here in the county. So these are our land use considerations and beginning a public process and stakeholder engagement to look at how we can focus on TOD around the corridors that we plan on improving. We are just kicking that off. We do have a consultant in place and more to come on that. Key milestones of the project are here and we're excited to, you know, work with the county about how transit will transform the economic development opportunities here in the county. So with that, I'm going to end and see if you have any questions. We have provided a package with some more information. The presentation is in there. We have some information about the shelters, the art bound program, as well as some pretty significant details about the capital and operating budget in 2021 that I would encourage you to look at and want to spend the time going over it in detail. So thank you very much and if you have questions.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Parker. Are there any questions from any board member? Any questions? Well, yes.
Am I saying anything? I want to say thank you to the hard work of Melissa Moenix and also for Mr. Hotower as well because I have really enjoyed being able to see the fact that we're getting some things completed, especially in terms of the station that you're building in the back of the courthouse. So I wanted to say thank you. And I'm going to come out and say hello, I'm right next door in the conference room. I see you looking around. But thank you for that. One quick question on that one cent sales tax for the bus, the bus area. The one cent sales tax on Clayton, is it cost share?
It's, it's cost share. So the money that feeds our capital program outside of the set aside of, that we're setting aside for Clayton County, we call our state of good repair program. I believe 90% of the facility will be funded through our existing state of good repair program and the remainder will be funded through the set aside, the Clayton County fund. So that entire facility is not being paid for with that. I forget the numbers off the top of my head, but I think it's half of a half a percent that we're putting aside in an account for Clayton County. Only a small portion of that will be used for the maintenance facility. The rest will be funded through the entire system's one cent sales tax.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Again, thank you for taking the time to come down and give us this briefing. Appreciate the work that you're doing and as Commissioner Warner said, I echo her appreciation for everything that's been done to finally get us moving and going on this station that we have next to the Justice.
Great. We're looking forward to opening it, so we will, I'm sure we'll see some of you when we open it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Take care.
Next, the board will hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. State your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Gary DeBose.
Gary DeBose, Director of Operations for the Clayton County Public Defender's Office. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Being a product of and professionally a child of Clayton County, I have seen all the growth in this county. I am familiar with the Commissioners, the Chair, I've seen your growth as well. Considering the landscape of our country, our city and our county right now, we must do more for our actual county. Consider this, think of your nephew, your brother, your son, if they were locked up and could not pay for a lawyer, would you want them to have adequate representation? We are trying to run an efficient office that truly cares about the people and primarily the poor people. The average caseload of our attorneys makes it almost impossible to do an effective job, which is an injustice to our population. If you want to change what is going on in regards to systemic racism in the criminal justice system, it has to start with funding our battle-tested defenders protecting and restoring the economically vulnerable. We've had issues with coronaviruses, but we weren't able to take care of or participate in budget calendar situations. No meetings with department heads took place and you all even said within your actual budget hearing that one of your most valuable resources is human capital. So to ignore an entire department does not support this notion. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners.
One question for you, Mr. DeBois.
Yes, sir.
Are y'all, are the employees over there county employees or state employees?
Summer County, Summer State.
Summer County, Summer State.
Yes, sir. But it is the Clayton County Public Defender's Office.
Thank you. Tange Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tange Johnson. I'm the Director of Strategic Partnerships and Programs for the Clayton County Public Defender's Office. So as a part of our team, we just wanted to, I wanted to briefly talk to you about programs. So prior to me coming onboard, we didn't have a program division within our department. Since we've been there, we've been able to transfer cases, we have been able to close cases, we've been able to have adjusted bonds, creative sentencing. We have done a lot with the help of our attorneys, with the help of our investigators, with the help of our administrators. A team like this is not something that any public defender's office within Georgia at this time have, has been able to accomplish. What has been accomplished has not been able to be accomplished. We are able to do something extraordinary here. We have been and we are excited about going forward with that. We cannot do that without the participation of our community. We cannot do that without the people who actually help push this project and these programs forward. We've developed partnerships with different agencies who are actually sitting on site right now because we believe that in order to help people who come through the court system in the community and the school system, which are all our partners as well, we have to create a space where we are holistic, not just serving the indigent community with regards to cases, but also working with them holistically to make sure that their rehabilitative needs are met. So I just wanted to stress the importance of our office and give you an idea of how deep it is, how deep it goes. And we just asked that you would consider adding to or continuing to add to our budget to make sure that we continue to retain the employees that we need to sustain our organization. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Erin Alexandra.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Get closer to the mic, please.
Closer? Okay. I was going to get louder in a minute anyway, so I'll probably step back. I just want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here, okay? And I know that the only reason why we're here is obvious because we're the Public Defender's Office. So let me explain to you your Public Defender's Office. Clayton County Public Defender's Office was started as a result of a group of inmates in the state who sued because of lack of appropriate representation. As an answer to that, the state started the Georgia Public Defender Standards Council at that time. The Standards Council, only one responsibility is to make sure that each and every county in the state of Georgia has adequate representation for poor people. So in order to do that, some states or some counties have the option of opting into the program or opting out. If you opted out, you as a county have to make sure that you provide all of your indigent services on your own. If you opt into the program, then the state would help facilitate, help set you up, help manage, really all they really do is help train. They pay for our training and they pay for seven of my employees. I have 41. All of the money to pay for my employees comes from the county. If the county doesn't pay for my employees, we have none. So let me tell you who I am. So I am a resident, right, of Fulton County. However, I am your Clayton County Public Defender. I have never been prouder of this job, never been happier to have it. And if you don't believe me, this is not for show, check my Facebook page. All I talk about is Clayton Strong, okay? So nobody is down for Clayton more than me. So when you have in this book, the budget book, where it says one of our most valuable resources is human capital, the fiscal year 2021 budget reflects this sentiment, includes pay enhancements at a cost of approximately $4.6 million, which includes a 2% cost of living adjustment, right, and then merit increase. What about the Public Defender's Office? I had a budget last year and I thank you for it, for $2 million, right? So by the time I come in as interim director, we realized that we had spaces that weren't satisfied and that we needed much more than $2 million to actually staff and take care of the poor people in Clayton County that were charged with crime. So what we did, we came and we asked and we, we were completely transparent. I have always been transparent. You can go right now and go look at every single one of my books and look at our numbers. We not only balanced our own budget, but we hired people and we have a fully staffed office for the first time in Clayton County history. And for the first time in Clayton County history, we have moved 3,000 cases in the moment that I have been here. I've only been here six months. We've been fully staffed, I moved cases, we've set up programs, we are working with state court, we're working with veterans court, we're working with drug court. Whatever you wanted me to do, Chairman, I did. I did and I did exceptionally. I'm asking you to keep my people. Please give us 1.1 that was originally recommended.
All right, thank you for your comments, but let me just add, there's no question about your commitment to Clayton County and all the good work that you are doing over there.
I love it.
But also taking into consideration and account that we are in the middle of a pandemic and as the CFO said, stated earlier, we don't know what tomorrow's going to hold, we don't know what the future is going to hold. But our commitment as a board, knowing that we need to have that representation for our citizens, those indigent, is that we will continue to look and try to find a way to provide additional funding.
Thank you.
But you got to have some patience, okay?
I can be a tad bit passionate, because you know why? These are not only my people, when I look at what's going on in the world, we consistently don't have enough people to take care of poor people. What we're seeing with the racism, it's really a poor people issue, right? Poor people. And so when it comes to poor people, I'm sorry, I get so emotional and I probably piss people off.
I know you for six months. When it comes to your passion, you are consistent. So thank you again and thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you guys for allowing me to hear.
You and your staff. Y'all are doing a good job.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Farmer.
Mr. Farmer, proactive community activist, unincorporated Clayton County, 24 years United States Air Force. I have been in harm's way. I have intrigued my ancestors to give me answers to the problem that I came to you. That bus stop, which is a safety hazard, almost got hit by Cadillac SUV. The Griswells Center, you would not have the meeting. The stoplights are too long. I do not see recycling. I got a thing here, $38. I got a thing here, thirty-eight dollars that I just did in my home alone. Fire station number six, six hundred thousand dollars. I was trained in inspecting areas like this and we did not get it. That words to you as such, you denied me the meeting with these people and also to come. But when you stand before God, you would not deny him his meeting because we have trusted in you and I voted in you last time, not this time, that you would run this county faithfully. When you was police chief, I stood before you, for you and fought Chairman Bell to give you what you wanted. And now you are Chairman and you are cutting the people of Clayton County short. On a positive note, I have had, uh, conferences with, uh, Rochelle Dennis, which is, uh, Commissioner Warner's secretary and, uh, Mrs. Howard, I think Mrs., uh, what you call them, secretary. Those ladies are positive. I dealt with your secretary and the COO secretary and they were negative. The COO secretary in my evaluation lied to me twice, cause she said she called and did not leave a number. How I supposed to know if you called me and don't leave a message? The same thing your lawyer did, so he called me and did not leave a message. How do I supposed to know that? Uh, your secretary, I came to you about that and told you how she treated me. I called her back again to, uh, give her some in, information. She was ruled again. I called, uh, Mrs. Rochelle Dennis to give her that information. Sometimes people take the power of their supervisor when their supervisor not present. You and the CEO need to talk to your secretaries and make sure this did not happen. I don't know how many discontent, uh, residents we have of Clayton County, but I am one. For twenty-four years there, I forced, they gladly laid my life on the line every day and been in harm's way. Nobody should be treated like that. And your people do that. You have a communication problem, some, all kind of problems. I come to you and give you, give you advice about how to fix the problem. The CEO martyr sits here and you put our people in harm's way. In the Air Force, this wasn't happening. So please fix this problem, at least that. Move that bus stop around the corner. It's a temporary fix.
Your, your time is up, sir. And as the, Mr. Parker stated earlier, there is a fix. It will be fixed and in play a couple of weeks or so. But let me also say this, that if my assistant's telling you something, then it's probably coming from me. And the second thing is that when you call, respect is a two-way street. You are not going to start yelling, screaming, hollering at my assistant when she's trying to get information. So it's, you have to give respect to get respect.
You can check with Officer Helm and Officer Wynn at that information that I gave you. Ask was I out of line?
Like I said, sir.
Because I had two witnesses present.
I made a statement. Please be respectful when you call into my office. Thank you.
I got a thing from your lawyer saying, I'm ca, I'm calling up talking non, I, I asked you that lieutenant, that non, uh, county business. I want to meet with him to explain what he said.
Yeah, because I also put out word that you are not to call my office unless you have county business to discuss. Because when you called and start ranting and raving about something that is totally irrelevant, then that becomes, uh, problematic too. You're disrupting the, the workplace.
I say-
And when, hold on, sir. And when my assistant has numerous calls to take, she cannot be on the phone three and four minutes listening to you talk about something other than constructive business of the county. So again, when you call, could you call stating county business and be respectful?
Yes, sir. But tell, give me a truth example, cause I only call here about county business.
I'm not gonna go into it any further, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
This going on a year now for that, for that martyr to be moved.
Mickey Garber.
Two years, going on two years, man.
Mr. Chairman, may I remove my mask?
Please don't.
Uh, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. The subject I'm gonna speak about tonight is cutting the public defender's office. Cutting the public defender's office, they spoke because they have a job to defend and families to support. I'm gonna bring a view of a taxpayer's view of it. Cutting the public defender's office not only denies the accused adequate counsel, it denies the accused adequate investigations, it denies the accused, uh, administrative procedure, it denies the accused who can't make bond, which causes the accused to be the ward of the county. Cutting the public defender's office causes the accused to be fired from their job if they have one, which denies the county tax dollars which the accused would have paid. This is a clear situation of cutting your nose off to spite your face. Cutting the public defender's office causes crowding, causing, causing inmates to bring lawsuits, causing early release of some convicted persons, a shortened time served, causing Chief Roberts a heavier load, causing your citizens becoming victims. Do not cut the public defender's office. It is, it, it, it is causing more money spent than you're gonna save. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening Chairman, Board, Commissioners. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated Hampton. I, uh, really, in this climate, I really wanted to commend, uh, the Clayton County Police Department under the leadership of Chief Roberts. They are doing an excellent job as they maintain, uh, the structure, uh, tolerance as they engage the public on their daily duties. So I, I did want to recognize its leadership, uh, Clayton County, the public, the Police Department is doing a wonderful job. Now, I also wanted to commend the Clayton County Housing Authority Board. They made a tough decision on Thursday that, um, got rid of some questionable corruption that may or may not have occurred. However, since that termination of this particular individual, I have gotten five phone calls from developers, say they are looking to come back to Clayton County, cause they no longer have to pay the plate. So that's good news. But on the other hand, as we move forward, uh, I think it was Ma Luther King said, when good people stay solid, corruption has a tendency to grow. So, last board meeting, Commissioner Franklin returned some money to Brown Financial because of potential conflict, uh, had some ethical issues tied to it. But yet on a consistent basis, this has been going on historically, we have current vendors that constantly donate to candidates who are running for reelection. So I don't know the difference between getting money prior to getting a contract awarded or getting funny, uh, funding after the contract is awarded, cause eventually those RFPs will have to come back for a vote. So are they buying favor, uh, we selling our souls to the devil or we, uh, being rented temporarily? So even though it's illegal to take funding from an existing vendor, it is no doubt unethical as we move forward because they are trying to persuade the vote on future RFPs. So even though you return the funding prior to, or you take the funding after the contract is awarded, in my mind, it's still unethical. So as we move forward, we must have a higher standard. And as I mentor young people, I tell them one simple thing, excellence is a habit. The more you practice excellence, it becomes a part of who you are. So it wouldn't be difficult for your standards and your ethical moral value-
Your time is up, sir.
-to stay, to the standards it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment.
Next to the board, we'll consider the consent agenda.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second by Commissioner, I think it was, uh, Warner. Uh, any questions on any of the items? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are board appointments.
All right. The first appointments are for the Green Space Land Trust Board. There's two appointments left. This board consists of Chairman, Vice Chairman and four board members. Again, we have two appointments left for this board. Are there any recommendations? Any recommendations? Madam Clerk?
Robinson?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Commissioner?
The Commissioners are still on view. Um, I just wanted to, um, make sure that this is the board that I confirmed that there is a District Three person on there already?
Yeah, that's the one I, I, uh, recommended and appointed.
Information back and, um, I just thought that the other Commissioners were still on view.
Uh, Madam Clerk, hold for the next meeting. Next appointment is to the Veterans Advisory Board, District Four appointment. Appointment is for District Four. It is to begin on June sixth, twenty twenty and will expire on June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Davis, you have a recommendation for us?
I have someone, but I still have not gotten back to me there to make that final decision. So I'd like to go ahead and hold that appointment until the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, hold that till the next meeting. Next board appointment is to the Library Board. Ms. Sloan Williams resigned from the Library Board. This appointment is to fill her unexpired term. Term will begin immediately and will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Any recommendations? Madam Clerk, let's hold that till next. Next appointment is also to the Library Board for Ms. Lily Golding, Golden, rather. Term will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty and will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Any recommendations? All right. Next board appointment, uh, Madam Clerk, hold that till next. Next board appointment is to the Tourism Authority Board for Mr. Damon Williams. His term will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Next, the new appointment will begin June thirtieth, twenty twenty and will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Any recommendations?
I move that we reappoint Mr. Damon Williams.
All right. Is there a second? Uh, second, the recommendation, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue, issue unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Defax Board for Dr. Barbara Pulliam. Uh, the position will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. New appointment will begin June thirtieth, twenty twenty and will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I move to reappoint, uh, Dr. Pulliam. Is there a second on the appointment?
Second.
Probably moved and second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Mr. Reed, is there a request for executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, executive session on litigation and real estate, please.
Uh, litigation, real estate and personnel.
Okay. And personnel?
Yes. No. Scratch that. Litigation and-
Real estate.
Real estate. Is there a motion going to executive session, uh, for real estate and litigation?
Motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye? Opposed. Opposed. Issue unanimous. All right. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you for being here. All right. Motion to reconvene. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Warner. Uh, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous, Mr. Reed.
If you'd like, let me take all three together?
Please.
All right. Uh, the first is a request, uh, to approve a settlement, uh, in the matter of, uh, Raynard Griffin versus Clayton County at all, uh, related to an automobile accident, a motor vehicle pursuit and auto, automobile accident collision which occurred on or around October seventeenth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. The next is a approval of an agreement in Ronald Moore versus Clayton County at all. Uh, I guess it's Marvin Darnell Berry and it's related to the, um, stop, detention, arrest, search and seizure on or about February seventh, twenty nineteen, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. And the final is approval of a, a settlement in the matter of Kevin Haver versus Clayton County at all relating to an accident that occurred on or around October tenth, twenty nineteen, at our New York Terra Boulevard in unincorporated Clayton County, in the amount of twenty-two thousand, uh, dollars.
All right. Do we have a motion on that? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
And then, did you want to make a motion on the?
Uh, make a motion to terminate the services of Thompson High Law Firm in reference to their representation for the county. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Is there, is Chuck, is that it? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.